I need to bang my gavel here. All right. Good evening. My name is Jason Delisle. I'm president of the Speedway Town Council. It's 7:00 PM on February 12th, and I call this meeting to order. We'll start off with our Pledge of Allegiance. Good standing.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So introductions. To my right is our town manager, Grant Quinones.
Good evening.
Town Councilor Sarah Gardner.
Good evening.
Town Councilor Sean Harold. And to my left is our town attorney, Bob Clutter.
Evening.
Our clerk treasurer, Philip Faust.
Good evening.
Town Councilor Vince Noblet.
Good evening.
And Vice President Nick Sturgeon.
Good evening.
All right. Our first item is our approval of our minutes from January 22nd. Do we have any corrections, comments? No?
Motion to approve the minutes as presented.
I'll second that.
All those in favor of approving our minutes, say aye.
Aye.
And we have, next up is our memorandum of our joint executive session with Speedway Town Council and the Redevelopment Commission. I don't know if this, does this actually need a, well, let's go ahead. Let's go ahead and we'll call. Alright, thanks Bob. Alright, so let's, I'll call for a motion to approve our memorandum.
I'll make a motion to approve the memorandum of the joint executive session in the town of Speedway and Speedway Redevelopment Commission on January 22nd, 2024.
Second.
Alright, thank you. So we'll take a vote. So all those in favor of approving our memorandum as presented, say aye.
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 Passes 5-0. Okay, next up is our Speedway Home Helpers, and I think Anthony Ramien's here to walk us through that.
Good evening.
Members of the Speedway Town Council, thank you for allowing me to speak this evening.
I'm Anthony Ramien, and I'm speaking tonight on behalf of the Speedway Housing Advisory Council. I'd like to use this time to talk about our flagship service program, Speedway Home Helpers. Speedway Home Helpers was started in 2017 by the Chamber of Commerce and the Community Development Corporation, and has now found its home with the Speedway Housing Advisory Council. The goal of Speedway Home Helpers is to improve our community by supporting our neighbors in maintaining a comfortable and safe living environment. Our volunteers help those in our community who may face physical or financial challenges and could use a helping hand with home improvement activities. These activities usually include general yard work, cleaning gutters, spreading mulch, planting flowers, clearing brush, and even some minor home repairs. This past fall, Speedway Home Helpers had more than 50 volunteers working at 13 different homes around town. It was really inspiring seeing so many citizens helping their fellow neighbors. As Councilor Gardner said during the State of the Town event last week, the citizens who volunteer for programs like this are a big part of what make our community so special. Since 2017, the Speedway Home Helpers program has completed projects at more than 50 homes around town with the help of dozens and dozens of volunteers. I'm happy to announce that we plan to build on those numbers and continue to grow our efforts in 2024. The next Volunteer Day for Speedway Home Helpers is scheduled for Saturday, April 6th. We will begin accepting volunteer and program applications in the next few weeks, and the Speedway Housing Advisory Council is excited to see what we can accomplish. To the citizens of Speedway who require assistance with the project, and to all of our past volunteers, please check the town website and social media on a regular basis for updates. I'd like to conclude by thanking the town council personally for their support of this program over the years. Councilors Sean Harold, Vince Noblet, Sarah Gardner, and Gary Rakes all donated their time and efforts during our last Volunteer Day in the fall, and I know several other past councilors have been, have done the same. We all appreciate your time and effort and support of this program. That's it. Thanks again for having me this evening, and look forward to what we can achieve. Thank you.
Thank you, Anthony.
If I could add a quick question.
Absolutely.
I was thinking about this, and I thought if there was someone who had already received help from the community maybe last fall or even years past, are they okay to go ahead and ask for help again if they have more assistance? Or do we ask, you know, every year, maybe you just put your name in the hat once? Or how, how does that work?
Typically, we have returned to projects several times in the past, so that's not a problem at all. I actually, when I planned it last time in the fall, I actually ended up calling a lot of our past clients, if you will, and asking them, asking them if they needed help again. So, yeah, that's absolutely possible.
Okay, awesome. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Alright, next up is Jeff Graves with our request for Run 317.
Good evening. Back here again for the fifth year in a row for Run 317 event. Looking to have another event, it will be September 26th. Thursday, September 26th is what we're looking at. Again, benefiting the Speedway Lions Club. Past four years, we've been able to donate over $8,000 to the Lions Club. So looking at about 1,500 participants again this year, gathering on the streets on a Thursday night and running, and then coming back and having a party right there on Main Street, and then hopefully going to the restaurants and bars and enjoying everything that the town of Speedway has to offer. So looking for approval for that event again.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion for the approval of the Run 317 event as presented by Jeff Graves.
I'll second.
Alright, I just had a quick question for you. Is this, I noticed, is this route slightly different than what the council?
No, same, same exact route. Yep, no change to the route.
Okay.
So.
Looks good.
If I might add one thing, I know in the past, Jeff, you have requested fees to be waived.
Yes.
I'm assuming that you're requesting that to be waived.
Correct.
So it is important for the new council to understand that event ordinance allows you guys to waive, for instance, and Cheryl put it here in her memo, permit, rental, and admin fees may be waived. The one fee that we do struggle with waiving, but the council can still waive it, is the time and effort for the street department to put out the barricades, because what's going to happen is we're going to have to pay overtime, because obviously the event is, is extra workday. Unfortunately, and Cheryl's not here this evening, I don't have what that labor amount is. So what I might propose is if you guys wish to waive those fees, just say permit, rental, and admin fees, and I will get with staff, try and understand that cost and let you know, and then go from there, if that makes sense.
So, so I, go ahead.
I, I thought in the past, basically, they just moved all the stuff over.
Sometimes they have, yeah, yeah.
And to be picked up in the morning when the regular crew comes on, so.
And, and that's fine if that's the way we want. I just need the motion to include that so that it's clear, if that makes sense.
I'll go ahead and amend my motion to add the fact that we'd be waiving any event fee that would occur on that, and that, I think I'd have to ask, Jeff, was that an employee of your group that did that? Or was that our, that took off the cones and things like that?
We, we put all, all the cones are ours. We put out all the cones, and then we pay the police separately.
I didn't think that was.
For, for the event and write each officer.
So we just have to waive the event fees.
Yeah, and permit fees.
Permit fees.
Okay, we're good. Do we need, have a second?
I just had a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
I just didn't know, obviously, I know this benefits the Lions Club. I didn't know if that was just a flat donation or how that works with.
It, it's part from race participants, and then what we collect on asking for participants to make donations. So it's part of the registration fee and then part, yeah.
Part of it goes towards them.
And each event, wherever we are, we're in five different places. We have five different charities.
Okay.
Yeah.
Alright, well, I'll second Vincent's motion.
Any other questions, discussion? Okay. So we'll call for a vote. All those in favor of approving our requests for Run 317 with the amended motion, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0. Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
Alright, our next item is approval of the Speedway Economic Development Director Employment Agreement, Grant.
Yes, so we, we do have some good news. We have made an offer after interviews and, and a fairly extensive period of time looking for the right candidate. So we have made an offer, and that offer has been accepted by Carmen Lethig. She will start as of February the 28th, so two weeks from this coming Wednesday. She has about 10 years' experience in community planning, some economic development, if administration and planning, and will be a good addition, I think, to our team. Will help lead and guide the efforts of the Redevelopment Commission. So the employment agreement as outlined, the term is from February 28th of 2024 for a three-year term, February 28th of 2027. That's the initial term. There are requirements for notice if that will not be renewed, very similar to what my contract is as well. Her compensation will be $103,000 annually. There are other things outlaid there, like a $30 monthly cellphone payment, as well as 20 vacation days and eight PTO days. That's typically based on an employee's length of service. For that, we've negotiated that. There's also a severance and a non-compete clause, if there is a severance, which means they can't, if they take another job, they can't share trade secrets or information about our projects with others. We do take that fairly seriously, because that, that is something that could be bad. There is a severance pay clause based on various criteria if, if that position does not work out. But we're excited about Carmen. She has signed and approved the agreement. If you approve this evening, we will have Jason sign that and provide that to her, but also the Redevelopment Commission at the end of the month will approve that agreement as well. So I'll answer any questions that you might have at this point.
Do we have a motion for, before discussion, do we have a motion to?
I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve this employment agreement with Carmen as presented.
I'll second.
Any discussion or questions for Grant?
Do you have additional comments, Grant?
Do I have additional comments? I'm very, I'm very excited to have someone working on the team, so it will definitely lighten the load for, for a lot of departments. I think a lot of extra work has been placed on other people over the past almost nine months now, which is amazing. But, yeah, very, very glad to have them, her join the team and take on some of these other projects. And I would hope some things can be moved forward at an accelerated rate. The reality is, when you split your time between two positions, you can only move things as fast as you can move them, so looking forward to it.
So, Grant, what is the, the kind of first 30, 60-day plan for her?
Yeah. So that will be something that will be discussed and decided on with the SRC. We have a priority list that I have put together, and I have given them a priority number. There are projects that are either ongoing, need to be moved forward, or ones that are in the near future. That's kind of the way they've been prioritized. I can share that with the council. I will share that with the Redevelopment Commission. I was asked to put that together and, before they approve everything at the end of the month.
Please share that.
Yep.
Thank you.
But I do want to point out, though, the Redevelopment Commission will set some of the major goals as well.
And, no, I just think having that for our visibility would, would be good, just as we're, you know, out doing our, our thing.
Yep. And when she starts, I mean, I've got four or five meetings already set up, kind of for that week and the week after, things like meetings with our financial advisors and other things. But her and I will sit down and discuss what I expect and things that we would like to see accomplished, and I look forward to that discussion, because it will be give and take, right? They may, she may see things that she feels are important, and we will discuss those and get that approval from the SRC as well. So it's not just one person telling her what to do, it's a couple different groups, so. But yes, I'm excited. Thanks, Vince.
Alright, so let's take our votes here. All those in favor of approving our Speedway Economic Development Director Employment Agreement with Carmen, say aye.
Aye.
Passes 5-0, and welcome, Carmen. Next up is our Resolution 2024-02, which involves adopting platted roads as public roads in the Founder Square Development.
Isn't there a correction on?
There is. On the agenda, it is correct. On your documents, it says 01. Jason has an official amended to sign, I think in the signature packet.
Down here, it's, it should be 02.
On, on the agenda, it should be 02.
Oh.
The one that was included in your packet said 01. We've already had a resolution last month.
Sorry.
Yep, just a Scrivener's error, so.
Grant, any details?
Yes, so I'm actually going to request that we table this item. We've had some further discussion. Bob and I talked a little bit further. Brian, if you could bring up that one document showing the proposed layout of the, of the roads there in Founder Square. There we go. So this is included in your packet. This was a, this was taken from promotional materials put together several years ago, revolving around the development of this Founder Square project. You can see that a majority of those lots have logos on them. They have been purchased, some have been developed and built. There are only two lots that are remaining, Lot 8 and Lot 9. Lot 8 is a potential extended stay product hotel. The developer's working through that with us as well. Lot number 9 was purchased by a daycare facility. Our staff has met with them, because they have requested the process to issue permits and submit drawings and everything else they'd like to get going. We had a discussion with them, and if you'll notice, there's a road that is shown surrounding that property, going from the south to the north, and then further across the back between the senior housing and Lot number 9 on that drawing. So that road doesn't exist now, but it is expected that it will need to be built for that project to be constructed. We don't allow any project to have no access to the backside. It's a fire code. This was laid out, this was discussed, but that is a private road. It will not be owned nor maintained by the town. It will be built by that developer, as well as the developer of Lot 8, because senior housing, Lot number 7, paid for the first, say, 50 or 75 feet of that road to get into their parking lot. So that is a cost that is on them. We are having a, a back and forth with that project. We believe that road is utterly critical to the proper moving of traffic in that area. If you go out there on a nice winter day, when everybody wants to wash their car, because it's 50 degrees, there's gridlock in there. People can't get around, because everybody's stacked up in crew. They open all four lanes, they allow all the cars to get in, but it's still, people wait. I love washing my car, but I'm not sure I'm going to wait that long. But we have pointed out that this other drive will allow an alternative means for people to get in and around interior roads, and also allow for a safety access for public safety. Let's say we had an ambulance run. So that is a critical road, and we have yet to really have agreement on that with the, the prospective tenants here, so we're asking for it to be continued tonight. The, the resolution as drafted really just adopts the roads that are already built, already out there, because they have town infrastructure underneath, sewer and water lines, as well as stormwater. That road, once again, those two additional roads will be private roads. We will not own nor maintain them. So I think we could approve this tonight, but I'm also considering maybe adding an additional language or commitment to try to shore this up a little bit. We're not trying to play hardball. We want businesses there, but I don't want to see the town adopt something that we're going to have to come back and build for $200,000 or $300,000 or $400,000, or that we're going to have liability because somebody expires because the ambulance can't get there. So I'm asking for it to be tabled until we're ready to bring it back. It'll probably be later this month or the first of next month.
I'd just like to clarify, Grant, on Lot 9, then, that they didn't pay anything additional for the roads that are there, but evidently for the extended stay, they did pick up a few on that.
Okay. I, I'm not sure I have an answer to that, Vince. I can ask on that.
Because, I mean, you had aldees who are, did they, did they pay for part of that road, or was that part of?
I think we built the, the roads that we were planning on, excepting we have paid for the construction with the bond out there for Founder Square. But as this was put together, it was assumed, it was told, that those other roads would be private and be privately funded.
Okay.
So.
One other quick question, too.
Yes.
So, and I, I know there's still a lot of details to be ironed out, but I would be curious if the town had any recourse if that road is not maintained in a manner that would be acceptable, I guess.
Yeah, and we, we can look at that as a private road if it's not owned, and I'm, I'm not sure about that. It's kind of like the parking lots inside the shopping centers. We can't really tell them how to maintain, because they're private roads. But that, that's something we can look at, Jason. So all I'm asking is just a, a table. I, I think we don't need a motion or a second, maybe just a motion to table and we move forward.
I'll go ahead and make a motion to table it.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor of tabling Resolution 2024-02, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That passes 5-0. Okay. Approval of contract with, how do you pronounce it? RQAW for CSO Expansion Planning and Design Services at the wastewater treatment plant.
Yes, so if you remember, at the last council meeting, the council did accept, accept our recommendation to hire RQAW for this work. Remember, this is in connection with the agreed order that we entered into last year because of a couple too many overflows in the combined sewer areas and with heavy rains. So this, tonight, before you, is an agreement that we have negotiated with RQAW, and Aaron Crowe, the project manager, is in the audience this evening. So that, this proposal dated February the 2nd outlines the fee, $60,000, found on page 2, which will pay for the preliminary engineering report and the sewer modeling portion of the requirement for, to know what we need to do. They are going to look at four different options. They are listed, where are they listed on the agreement? They're somewhere on that agreement, because I remember reading, there we go. On the back, on the attachment, those four alternatives are listed, items 1 through 4. They are a million gallon storage tank, a 2 million gallon storage tank, a wet weather treatment disc filter system, and then potentially using our current collection system to store, getting some homes off of it and using it as inline storage. So this, this agreement is basically a 10-month time period to have that portion of the project completed by October of 2024, for the fee that I enumerated there, $60,000. We're ready to move forward. This has been reviewed by council. We would like to get started. We will have a monthly update meeting with them as they work on that, and they'll also communicate with IDIM and others to make sure we're moving in the right direction.
I'll make a motion to approve the contract with RQAW for CSO Expansion Planning and Design Services at the wastewater treatment plant.
I'll second.
Any questions for Grant?
So this, maybe this is me being nitpicky, but at least in the version of the contract I have, I still show in some red lines. Have those been taken out of the actual?
Well, those were actually crossed through, meaning we asked for those to be removed.
Okay. But will those be removed from the agreement that's signed?
They typically are not. This is a standard agreement from, what, what is the name of it? EJCDC.
EJICD, yeah.
Yeah. And so how you modify their standard agreement is just by those cross-throughs. So, so that way, it's evident that they've made the changes you've requested.
Alright. At least in the contracts, I've reviewed my day job, the, any red lines, any, are just stricken from the contract?
Yeah, the, the way the EJCDC does is they just strike them out, so that way, it makes review easy for somebody like me that's requested changes without having to go back to my original, but.
Okay.
And then, and then, for instance, on their additions, those are bolded. So if you go to like page, pages 5 and 6, where they're talking about insurance, the distinction there is those are bold, so that you know what the additions have been to.
And those were all required by our RFP that we put out. We, we set those limits, and they included those in that contract.
Thank you.
Yeah, I do see your point, but it, these are very different contracts.
Yep. That makes sense. Thank you.
Yep. And Aaron is here tonight. I don't think he, he wants to speak or needs to speak, but he is here, so we appreciate that. And we will look forward to working with RQAW. We have, this is really the first time we've worked on a major project like this with them. We believe they can do it. Brad has experience with them in other communities. They have done a good job in their preparation and proposal. We think they can do the job, and we look forward to working with them.
So, no pressure.
No, I know that if Grant has any other comments, I'll, I'll hear them.
Yeah. I don't know that I'm shy about sharing that with our, with our vendors, so.
Alright, any other questions for Grant or Aaron? Okay, so all those in favor of approving our contract with RQAW, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Alright, next item is a approval amendment to the contract with American Structure Point to assist with round two application to the Indiana Finance Authority for lead water service line inventory. Grant?
It's a mouthful, I know. So you guys were not on the count, you were not seated as council members, but last year we did do Phase 1 with American Structure Point, which helped to identify areas where potential lead service lines are to be found. And I want to make it very clear, these are lead service lines that are in people's homes, right? Almost all of our lines have been changed out over the past 15, 20 years, if they had a concern about lead or other, other issues. So part of what we were required to do is understand the composition of those service lines that go into people's homes, though. So we are applying for round 2. Round 1 was kind of a, a summary look at what we believe, based on things like age or past records or experience, what we believed was potentially lead service lines. We identified three or four different areas in the town. This now kind of tightens that up and, and creates a process to do a survey and do some direct contacting, and even provide testing kits, purchasing with this money from this grant program, that people can swab their own line and give that to us and say, oh, it's not lead. One of the easiest ways, people can just take a magnet and put it up against the line. If it doesn't stick, it's lead, right? Every other type of material, not plastic, but, so I got it, but copper or others, it, you know, so that's an easy way to tell. But this, they will help us with the grant's application for the round 2 through the Indiana Finance Authority. $3,500 will be their charge, and I think that grant, Philip, was it around $100,000 that we could get? I'm trying to remember the amounts.
Probably around 75 because of what we already received.
There you go. And, and that will not correct all of our problems, but once again, this is kind of a bite at the apple to try to knock this problem out and, and get it taken care of. a bite at the apple to try to knock this problem out and, and get it taken care of. And they did a good job on the first part of the application, very organized, very thorough, helped us meet all the deadlines and we, that's why we're recommending using them on Phase 2.
Do we have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the amendment to contract with American Structure Point assisting Round 2 of the application in the Indiana Finance Authority.
I'll second.
Any questions for Grant?
Take it. We've got the budget for?
Yeah, so every year in the water budget, a certain amount of dollars are put for maintenance of our distribution system. This would fall under that category.
All right, I'll call for a vote. All in favor of our approving our amendment with American Structure Point, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes 5-0. All right, next is our approval, a proposal from Keizer Consulting for the update of the Town of Speedway's ADA Transition Plan and Title 6 Plan. Grant?
So this is a required plan that the town needs to update every two years. Keizer Consulting has helped us with that. They do a great job with it. This plan is necessary to apply for any state or federal grants for transportation dollars. So with that, they've given us a great price of $5,000. Because they've done it before, they can do it that cheaply, and we recommend approval of this agreement so they can get that wrapped up in the next couple of months.
All right, well, I'll make a motion to approve the proposal from Keizer Consulting for the update of the Town of Speedway's ADA Transition Plan and Title 6 Plan.
Second.
Any questions? Call for a vote. All in, all in favor of approving our proposal with Keizer Consulting, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes 5-0. All right, next item is approval of change order number one for the Eagle Creek Siphon Repair Project on 10th Street. Grant?
Yeah, so this is one of those items that is bad news. I think most of what I do is good on these council agendas. This was a project, an emergency project that the previous council approved in September, October timeframe. That project has mostly been completed. We had a break in our force main on 10th Street. It was pouring into the Little Eagle Creek, which is in violation of standards. We corrected the problem, we bypassed it, and now we hired JG Case to fix that. So they put in a new force main, bored it under the creek, got it out of the creek bed, so we should never have this kind of a problem again. That bid was in the amount of $499,786. They now, after consultation with Indianapolis and the levy that affects Little Eagle Creek, we have been required to use a higher level of flowable fill. Flowable fill is nothing more than a product, think of sand, a little bit of cement and water that mixes together in a slurry to fill voids and cracks, and it really works well on that kind of application where we've dug into the levy. So they have asked and required of us that we use that flowable fill product, 330 cubic yards, and that totals an amount of $85,387.50. So tonight, we are asking the council to approve that change order to the contract so that work can be completed. I'll answer any questions that you might have.
Do we have a motion to approve?
I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve the change order number one for the Eagle Creek Siphon Repair Project on 10th Street as presented by Grant.
First question, how's this going to affect the budget and whose budget?
So this comes out of wastewater budget. This was an unbudgeted for expenditure. We approved it last year, but we always have dollars in those budgets to take care of on the water side, the distribution system, on the collection side, or the sewer side, the collection system. So these are dollars that will be taken out of those budgets, and it might delay a project a month or two or three months, but this is something that, that really is important to get wrapped up and taken care of.
So has any review of what impacts this will have specifically on projects that they have lined up?
We, the projects we have lined up, like the RQAW agreement that we approved tonight, is more of a long-term. It's, it's a, it's a multimillion dollar project that we'll be looking at bidding and, and funding next year and into the future years. There's no large, major capital improvement projects, other than some valve repair and replacements. This will not impact those, those budgets.
Well, but even projects, so there's no?
Yeah, they won't.
Okay.
Yeah, they won't stop any of those projects from moving forward.
Do we have a second to?
Second.
I, I had a quick question for you too, Grant. So, and maybe I'm putting you on the spot a little bit here.
Yeah.
Why, I guess my question is, why didn't JG Case, why were they not aware of the?
Cause?
Is this something that was kind of an unusual situation or?
It's an unusual situation only in the fact that we didn't realize Indianapolis had any higher standards for repair of the levy. We thought with the boring that that wasn't going to be an issue. When we contacted them about the permit to do the work, they said, oh, by the way, you got to use this more expensive fill. That was not given in the bid by the contractor. They could have very easily told us, we're going to put in the fill that we specked and because we did not necessarily know about the additional requirement of this flowable fill. We don't affect that levy at all, ever, and this was one of those things that I think we just kind of overlooked. We didn't do a, we didn't do it in our spec and that's what the bid was put together on. Had we known about that and put it in the spec when we asked them, they would have had $85,000 more in their contract.
I was going to say that, I mean, although it was missed, it still has to be paid for either upfront or now, so it's, it's still something that has to be done.
Yep, and projects typically have anywhere from a 10 to 15% contingency to take care of this kind of issue. $500,000 bid, $85,000 represents about a 20%, a little less than 20% increase.
Okay, any other questions? All right, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of approving our change order for the Eagle Creek Siphon Repair Project on 10th Street, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Passes 5-0. All right, next item, approval bids for the 2024 street resurfacing project.
Yes, so I'm going to talk about the streets that we're going to do with this bid first, just so you're aware, and there was a map included. So I'm going to, I'm going to name these off and I hope I don't mess it up or, or miss one. So the, the first road is, they're in yellow, from Hickory Wood Drive from High School Road to Parkwood Drive will be overlaid. Let me make sure I'm not, am I reading that right? Yes. Hollister Drive from Patton to Moller Road, Bowport Road from School Drive to Moller Road, Maplewood Drive from Meadowwood Drive to Moller, and then also as you cross over Moller, Maplewood Drive from Moller over to Meadowwood Drive. And you might be asking, well, why is this $1.7 million? Several of these roads are very wide roads. They have two travel lanes. They also have a full parking lane. A lot of our roads aren't like that, but several of these are those wider, so that's why it's probably a little more expensive than most of our normal work that we do. This also will include some new sidewalk work, curb, gutter ADA ramps where needed. That's a requirement of the Community Crossings Matching Grant Program. We received a million dollars. The town was to, this was an estimated cost of 2.2 million. Bids came in really well for us, just under 1.7. So we're actually going to get less state money, but spend less money overall, if that makes any sense. Any additional funds that we were going to take out of Motor Vehicle Highway or the GO bond, we'll identify where those can be spent and potentially do other projects throughout the remainder of the year. But the bids, the low bids came in. We received five full bids prior to the deadline. Howard Companies was the low bidder, $1,695,782.50. And you can see the high bid was $1,984,936, so there was about a $200,000, $280,000 difference.
Do we have a motion to approve?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the bids for the 2024 street resurfacing project.
Second.
And just as, for clarification, that's Howard Companies.
I got a question for Grant on that. Has Howard Companies, have they done work in the town before?
They, they have. It's been a while, though. They used to be, and I wish Rob was here, he's not. They have changed name over the past couple of years, but we have used them in the past five years.
So he's familiar with?
He is, yep. DC Construction is the one that has got almost every one of our bid the last three years, but you can see they, they were about $80,000 higher on this one. So they have vetted that contractor, checked references, and they believe that they can do that work.
Okay, great.
I had just a quick comment. So very happy we're doing this, these improvements, but it, it also highlights the cost
Yeah.
of doing things like this in the town. It's just unbelievable to me how much it costs to resurface roads.
Yep.
But like I said, happy we're doing it, so.
Yep.
I guess my question is, obviously I was one that benefited from this last year living on Patton, how does the town?
Yeah, so, so we have a Pacer rating, and I'm not going to embarrass myself and try to give you the acronym for that one. Rob has actually sent that to me. I have asked him a couple of questions and then I want to provide it to you because it does show the, the roads that have the different scores. Now, the thing we try to do is we don't just do the lowest roads. We try to pick roads that are within near proximity because that leads to a lower, more competitive bid. So we try to pick the roads that are close together that are worst on that scoring rating, and then once they become new, they, they get all the way up to a 10. So they're, it's going to take seven, eight, 10, 12 years for them to start deteriorating. Most of these roads should get 18 to 25 years. They're low traffic, they don't carry a lot of semi-traffic. Some of them do. Hickory Wood is one that kind of goes out to high school from time to time, but there is a rating system and I will provide that to you. I, I want Rob to come into an admin session one time and go over it with you guys and kind of help you understand that because that's a big part of what their department does.
And then do we have to take the lowest bid? Is that how that works?
Um, I mean, we're not necessarily required to. It's the lowest, most responsive bid, so if a bid, we don't think they know what they're doing or have a bad record, we can always accept someone else.
Yeah, the statute reads lowest responsive and responsible bidder. So that's one of the things that the team does, Rob and his team, is to investigate all of them, particularly if there's a new company that people haven't heard of or we haven't used. So it has to be a responsible bidder also.
All right, any other questions? All right, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of approving our bid for the 2024 street resurfacing project, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes 5-0. Item 13 is our approval of the 25th Street Engineering Agreement between the Town of Speedway and Keizer Consulting Group.
Yes, so this is an agreement that will get Keizer Consulting to do a, about a 60% plan set to give us a good feeling for what that road is going to cost to be completed. At that 60% design standard or point, we will then have decisions to make, and if we want to move forward on the remainder of that, we'll have to finish that out. This contract does kind of cover all of that, though, and it's in the amount of $177,500. That is contained on Page 2 of the agreement, 177.5. The timeline on this, this is six months from the effective date of the agreement, so we're looking at August to have that, those 60% plans kind of wrapped up so that we can decide, and the council can look at whether we want to do a full reconstruction of 25th Street. And mainly this is looking at the section of Lynnhurst down to Parkwood. We believe that's our worst section of 25th. I want to reiterate, though, that 25th Street is owned and, and controlled by the state, the city of Indianapolis. They have told us they will not be doing repair on that because it's not a main arterial. So we're going to have to decide after the design, do we proceed with that? Do we work with, say, IMS to try to get funding from the state, maybe in the form of a capital bill? Or do we issue bonds or use cash on hand to, to try to do what we need to do? So there's a lot of decision points that need to be go in, going into this decision tonight. You're not committing to the road project, but you're committing to understand how much that road project will cost. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
And if we're not ready to move forward, that is, that is fine as well. We can always take another month to consider it. That's just going to push that completion date back, and that kind of misses our, our budget, but we can always amend it prior to the adoption on October 31st, I think is when it has to.
I'll go ahead and make a motion for the approval of the 25th Street Engineering Agreement between the Town of Speedway and Kinzer Consulting Group.
I'll second.
I had a quick question.
Yes.
So $177,000 seems like a lot of money for an evaluation of a road. At the same time, I think we all can appreciate the state of that road and that obviously something needs to be done. So my question is, that was a statement, I guess, my question is, is that in line
Yes.
evaluations of roads of that?
Yep, so we, we believe the road project will cost between three and a half and four million. A good rule of thumb for engineering fees is about 15 to 18% of a project cost. That's almost universal, what they do, so if you took 15% of 4 million, some might check my math, but I think that's $450,000, give or take. This is significantly lower than that. And I think they're giving us this price because they are familiar with our roads more so than maybe other engineering firms, and I, I think they also want to continue to do more work for the town. So I think this contract's probably saving us in the neighborhood of $200,000 to $250,000. I was very surprised by the price when it came back.
That's good background. Another question for you too, sorry.
Yes.
That road, I feel like we continually have issues with that road.
Yep.
Is this taking into account trying to make longer-term improvements to that road?
Yeah, so this would?
Some of the stuff we've done in the past have been
Yeah.
short-term fixes or?
So this would be a full rebuild of the base, the asphalt, curb and gutters, everything on the road. What was done 10 years ago, almost 10 years ago, was more of a, they took four or five inches of asphalt off, left the base. The base was exposed for an extended period of time with bad weather. That just led to problems. So this would be going down, replacing that base, doing base repair, new base, asphalt, all of that. It will be making that road probably what it should have been done 10 years ago, and that's why it's a $4 million project.
When that was done, was it the city of Indianapolis that did that or?
No, it was, it was the Town of Speedway.
Town of Speedway.
Yep. And I'm not sure we did anything wrong.
Right.
It was a, it was a way of us making significant improvement that should have lasted 10 or 12 years, and unfortunately, we got about seven years out of it because we didn't go down far enough.
It's disappointing that if it's a, it's a road that is owned and should be maintained by the city of Indianapolis that we're having to do this, but
Yep.
the reality is, we know the fixes need to happen, so.
Yep.
It is what it is, I guess.
Yeah, it annoys me greatly, but
Yeah.
I, I think the reality of this situation is sometimes you got to do what is important for the community and I'm not saying we have money coming out our ears because we don't, but I think we have the money to do this and do it right, and Indianapolis just isn't going to do that.
When you say do this, you mean the evaluation. We're still going to
Yeah, discuss, yep, yep, yep. But we got to know what it's going to cost.
Yes.
And then we can, I, I think we can then, it's not, it's not out of the question that we can still approach Indianapolis, and I believe that we should try
Yeah.
and say you need at least to provide us some funding.
Absolutely.
Maybe we can get some of that MBA money.
MBA money, yeah, that's coming in.
Yeah.
Are they driving on 25th Street, you think, to get downtown?
They, they got, they got Riley to open their, their plant up.
Yeah, right, they did. They opened their plant up early. Yep, yep.
Okay, any other questions for Grant? All right, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of approving
All right, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of approving our 25th Street Engineering Agreement between the Town of Speedway and Kieser Consulting Group, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Pass is 5-0. Item 14, Approval of Grant Application to the Energy Efficiency and Conservation Block Grant Program. Kind of butchered that a little bit, but EECBG.
There you go.
Grant.
And I saved this one last because it says grant application. And no, I, I appreciate your indulgence. I know I've spoken to every item. That is fairly uncommon, but tonight, it, it, it's the way it is. So this is a grant program that we became aware of about 30 days ago. It was opened in, they have a date at the top there, but I can't read it now. I don't have my, November. So it was, it was opened at the end of the year. I became aware of it, I think, at the end of December. We made contact with Lockmueller Group, who has done a lot of this type of work for other communities. I had a couple of calls with them. We identified an energy efficiency program and a plan that will put together some costs for doing some small projects. This is a $100,000 grant. We will have $5,000 that will come out of the building maintenance fund. So that means we'll get potentially $95,000 that we can use to identify some smaller projects that will increase energy efficiency, hopefully save us dollars, and be paid for by a, by a federal-funded program. If we don't apply for this funding, we're okay, but it's money that, if we don't apply, we don't have an opportunity to gain. I feel like having an energy efficiency study for our four or five facilities would be very good because we can then plan over the next 10 years. We talked about maintenance, we've talked about maintenance and planning of buildings and that type of thing. This is one of those steps that will help us get a plan that we can follow, and then even more than the plan, do some small project. There's a budget that, that is outlined. I, unfortunately, I communicated with the council. This was due on February the 2nd, so it's already been submitted, but I'm asking you to kind of ratify that submission, which is kind of backwards, but it, it, there was a deadline. So I'll, I'll answer any questions that you might have on this proposal.
I'll make a motion for approval of the grant application to the Energy Efficiency and Conservation Block Grant Program, EECBG.
There you go.
Well done. I'll second that.
I, I guess, I'm always concerned on these federal grants. Are there any hooks or kind of, you know, stipulations or anything that we have to?
So the stipulations that we have to follow are the, the parameters of the guidelines in the program, which are not really that particular. And if we do do construction, we do have to follow federal guidelines on bidding. My guess is that's going to add maybe 5 or 10% to the cost, but unfortunately, that's just the, the way it is. So other than that, there are no other strings. Free money is never free, right?
Especially when it's the federal government. There's always something.
Something. Yep, yep.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll just make a quick comment, too. I know the deadline was February 1st. Like you said, we're kind of doing this backwards, but I think we appreciate your diligence and, you know, researching and, and, you know, seeking out grants like this, so.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions?
And I do want to say Lockmueller did a great job working with me and other staff, and I, I thought they helped us significantly.
All right, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of approving our grant application to the Energy Efficiency and Conservation Block Grant Program, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Pass is 5-0. All right, we made it to page two.
Not bad, 54 minutes.
All right, item 15, Approval of Claims and Utility Adjustments. Philip.
Thank you. I am asking for both approval of claims and utility adjustments for the period of January 18th, 2024 through February 7th, 2024. Utility adjustments are on two pages for a total of four customers. And the claims on a total of 20 pages and are in the amount of $2,450,225.12. And one of the large items that you might notice on there has to do with that siphon repair that we were all discussing.
I'll make a motion to approve the claims and utility adjustments as presented by a court treater.
I'll second.
All right, any questions for Philip? All right, all those in favor of approving our claims and utility adjustments as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Pass is 5-0. Thank you, Philip. Now, finally, our report from our department supervisors who have been waiting patiently. And Cheryl's not here, right?
No, she is not.
So we'll, Chuck already knows he's up next.
Good evening, council. Just to give you a quick update on our application process, we have, at this point, done the written test, the oral interviews. We've completed the polygraph examination, and we've had three candidates that have made it to the, the background investigation, which usually takes the longest part of this process, just to go through backgrounds of candidates. And hopefully, we'll get a candidate that proceeds through. And if they don't meet our standards, then we'll start all over again. So next, we'll move to our employee of the quarter for the last quarter of 2023. We gave her her plaque the other day, Brandon Spangler. She's our communications coordinator. And I just wanted to recognize everything that she does for the department and, and making sure our dispatch center runs efficiently. And, and Brandon's one of the first people to come in and, and pick up a shift when one of our communications people are sick or just can't be there. So I just wanted to recognize Brandon for that. And tomorrow, we will have our first IMS Law Enforcement Subcommittee for the Indy 500. So racing season will officially start tomorrow. So we, we'll meet with all of our local, state, federal law enforcement partners. Like we said, the fire department will be there. The medical personnel will be there, and we kick off our, our planning for the 500 this year. So just to end real quick, I'll give you some of our January statistics really quickly. Our officers responded to 2,890 calls for service in January. They issued 803 traffic citations and 60 traffic warnings. So that's all I have.
Any questions for Chief?
Busy month.
Busy month. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, up next, Chief Fishburne.
Hey, thank you. So I want to start with our runs for January. We had 287 total runs. 59% of those were EMS, and 41% were fire-related, which, like I've said before, can be a car accident, can be a false alarm, can be food on the stove or a full-blown incident. Some of those are part of our mutual aid agreement, so some of those were out of Speedway. But then they come into Speedway to help us mitigate some of our issues, so. The end of this month, we're going to be going up to Wisconsin with our spec committee to do the final approval of the drawings for our new engine. So for those of you who are new to the council, in May of 2022, we ordered that engine. That's the lead-in time that, and now it's three years. So we secured financing, which Philip is familiar with. They, they tell me that we're going to take delivery on it in the fall of this year because now it, it will actually get on the assembly line at that point. It's a little over $800,000 price tag, which financing was already secured in 2022 while Jacob was here. And we're going up to just put the final stamp on that before they put it on the assembly line. We have recently set up our spec committee for our new ladder, which we won't have to worry about paying for, for probably three years. But it'll take us four or five months to spec out that new ladder, which keeps our fleet kind of rotating. And hopefully, we won't have the double-up liability that we had with our last two. We've kind of tried to spread that out. We had three or four years where we were making two payments, and we want to stay away from that. And we keep pretty good maintenance on our vehicles, so. It's not to toot my horn, it's to let you know that we are getting involved in a few things. I was asked to serve on the Indiana Fire Chief Association's Executive Board, which I've, I've put them off before, but it puts you in a position to hear about grants, to help push legislation for the firefighters and for the fire service, for the electrical code, for inspection, for things like that. Spent the day a couple of weeks ago down at the State House for Legislative Day, where we get to meet lobbyists and our representatives and those things. And, you know, kind of glad-hand, and it keeps you networked in. Little did I know that then last week, I was asked if I would step up and be the vice president of the Marion County Chiefs Association. So Chief Malone from Indianapolis is the president, and he had asked me to step out of my role as secretary treasurer. So I'm, I'm, I said yes to that, too, which it just takes me out of the office a little bit for meetings and things like that. But it does, as a smaller community in Marion County, I want to be the first to hear about things like, that are going on in Wayne Township and kind of try to understand that so that if your constituents have questions, we can answer those educatedly and how that impacts Speedway, all of those sorts of things. So I mean, Nick and I, I think, have even had some of those conversations. So all of that to just say, it also allows, when I'm not here anymore, you know, Assistant Chief Milhorne or whoever is, to have a foot in the door for those organizations, which will only help our community. So that's really all I have.
Any questions for Chief?
Thanks, Chief. Thanks, Chief.
Congratulations.
Yeah.
Awesome.
Yeah, I'll let you know.
Yeah, you think.
Parks and Rec.
Hello.
Tammy Smith.
First, I wanted to mention, this past Saturday, I attended the Wayne Winter Games and Health Fair. I partnered with the Speedway Running Club. We saw several Speedway residents, including Sarah and her kiddos. So it was a great opportunity for us to promote our Speedway programs and events. I wanted to mention to the community that we are seeking a part-time Parks and Recreation Assistant. We are accepting resumes now. You can find that information on the town's website. We're looking for someone to work part-time with some flexible scheduling hours during normal business hours, including some evenings and weekends for our programs and events. So please check out the information on our website for that and come work with me. The Lions Club Pancake Breakfast and Bazaar is scheduled for Saturday, February 24th. The past several years, they have allowed Speedway Parks to run the bazaar portion of that event. We are doing that again this year. That event is 8 to 11. We do still have some openings for tables. If anyone's interested in being a vendor, they can email me at parks@speedwayin.gov. I did want to mention, one of the vendors is Sparky's Pantry, something that the kids do there at school. So we are asking visitors if they would like to, if they don't mind bringing some non-perishable food items to donate to Sparky's Pantry at the event. Once again, this year, we're going to hold our spring volleyball camp for the Speedway Girls in grades three through sixth. They will be evenings on March 4th, 11th, and 18th. Those are Monday evenings. The registration is open on our website. The cost is the same as last year, $30, which includes a shirt. There is limited spacing, which filled up really fast last year, so I did want to, to mention that, that it is open. It's coming up quickly, so it was kind of a last-minute thing to add it back in this year, but we're excited about offering that. I also wanted to announce an event we're going to hold at Leonard Park on April 8th, which is the eclipse day. It's called Total Eclipse at the Park. It will be from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM, so the actual event will end before the actual eclipse. We're going to have some eclipse-related activities, like making pinhole projectors, have some music games, food truck, and the Spark Coffee will be out there as well. They are actually going, are sponsoring our event, so we thank the Spark Coffee for that. Within a few weeks, there'll be full details posted on the Facebook event page with the same title, Total Eclipse at the Park. A flyer will be shared with Speedway Town Talk Paper, distributed at the schools, and posted on social media. We are getting ready to start this year's yarn art project. That's something, this will be the third year where we do a yarn art mural at Leonard Park. We will start meeting on Mondays, beginning February 26. It's from 4:00 to 8:00 PM at the municipal center for those volunteers, crocheting and knitters that would like to help us with that project. This year's theme is called Lania's Garden. Lania Thomas was a Speedway resident that passed away January 14th after a long battle with an illness. She is survived by her husband and children here in Speedway. Their children have participated in many of our programs over the last six years. Lania was an avid crocheter, and her yarn was donated to Speedway Parks and Recreation. With her husband's blessing, we are honored to use her yarn in this year's project and in Lania's memory. Her yarn will be used as a focal point of this year's project, which will be things you might see or find in a garden. So anyone interested in volunteering their crochet and knitting talents, please join us in creating this year's yarn project, and they can email me at parks@speedwayin.gov for more information. And that's all I have.
I've got one question for you.
Yes.
The pickleball courts.
Yes.
Are they officially open or?
Well, they're, they're done. We don't have nets up because we don't have the nets up during the winter. So, and our bathrooms are locked right now. So, but once the park officially opens and we put the nets back out, yes, they're ready.
And then tell the public, how do they go about reserving one or just showing up or?
Right now, it's just showing up. If it becomes really busy, we might have to come up with another option. I, I'm considering putting up signs just for people to be respectful of others. Some other parks have signs like that that say, you know, limit your time to one hour or something along those lines to allow others to use it. So that might be the first thing that we do. But we'll kind of look into it. I know we've had people ask about reserving it. And we do reserve our shelters, and we reserve the ball diamonds, so we may have an option to reserve those as well for a small fee.
Yeah, great.
Yep.
I had a question, a few, Tammy. The part-time hire, is this new? I know it's your one-man band, so is this finally some help for you?
Yeah, so last year, when we went through the budget process, that was a request that I had asked, and the Parks Board had approved, but of course, the town council had to officially approve it. And they did on our, on this past budget for this year. So that's why we're posting it out there. Yes, I'm quite looking forward to having someone helping me through this.
Absolutely. You deserve it. And then the other thought was, just as a mother, summer camps. Is that, will that information, I know you're working on that, but when that might be? Because I know as, on the behind the scenes, and I'm like trying to figure out who's going where and how I'm picking them up.
Yeah, if everybody can just, when they just monitor our Facebook page and as well as the website, they can go to Parks and Recreation. I did send an email last week to the school administration with the proposed schedule for this upcoming year. Coach Bennett will check with all the potential coaches, and he'll get student coaches to help that we employ. He'll get back with me with any updates to the schedule as far as timing for which camps. And once I get those back from him, I'll get it official, and we'll have it opened up for registration. So hopefully, we'll have that sometime in March.
Look forward to it. It's always great. It's a great-
Thank you.
Program that you offer for a very low rate, so.
Yeah, they are mini camps. Unfortunately, we don't have any all-day camps.
But yeah, you can kind of make it, you know, and then with the free lunch at the high school, I don't know if a lot of people know that you can do that, too. So you can kind of do a few camps, take them right over to the high school.
Exactly.
Yeah, it's a great program.
And we should, again, have our free swim lessons that we've had for many, many years. So that information will come out at that time as well.
Thank you, Tammy.
Okay, you're welcome. Thank you.
Thanks, Tammy.
Thank you. And Public Works with Mr. Sloan.
Good evening, council. We'll start with the street department. They've been busy patching potholes, street sweeping, and picking up trash and right-ofways. At the wastewater treatment plant- At the wastewater treatment plant, business as usual. Plant treated 122 million gallons of water for the month of January. Cleaning in all the buildings. Maintenance department has been working on getting our belt filter press realigned. They just got that done today. On the stormwater side, working on the 2023 annual report, which is due to IDM April 1st, 2024. Waterworks, business as usual. They treated 65 million gallons in January and they are busy getting ready to fire up the surface water plant. That's all I have.
Actually, did have one question and I've
Sure.
come in, and I've seen this on social media. I've had this thought, is, as, as far as the street sweeping goes, I know, especially during the fall and then throughout the time during the winter, you know, the street sweeper goes and cleans. Is there any way that, you know, the public could get a little bit of heads up of, hey, we're going to be on this street so we can move the cars and, you know, just give a little bit of heads up on timing of that? Because I know there's times when it's like, oh, you know, gutters are clogged because of a tree and
Sure.
you know, the sweeper just went by and it's like, man, it'd be nice to have been able to move the, you know, car so it could get in there and get that out.
Absolutely. Yeah, I mean, I would honestly direct that question to Rob on, you know, because they handle that, but maybe put it out on social media. Hey, we're coming certain days. I know where I used to work, they had signs, no parking, street sweeping on certain days, certain times.
Just to put that out there, because I got a text message a little bit ago from my wife, said, hey. But no, I, but I did, I was top of mind too, because I've, I've seen some comments and I've heard some things about it here in the last couple of days and just thought I'd bring it up right now.
All right, thank you, Brad.
Thank you.
All right, next up, our town manager report.
I have said enough, no report this evening.
Oh, come on. Okay. Counselor Gardner.
Yeah, I don't want to keep anybody longer than they have already stayed tonight, so thank you. I just wanted to say, I know Cheryl's not here, but the state of the town, again, I know it was our first time being on this side and not sitting in the audience, but I just feel like she did an amazing job on that event and she spent a lot of time preparing, so thanks to her. And then I had to give a props to Pastor Grant
Yeah.
for just stepping in and again, not many people can just flip on a dime like that and to, to be able to, to offer the prayer at the beginning, I thought was really, was really great. So thank you for that.
No problem.
So.
Counselor Harold.
Yeah, the only thing I wanted to give a, give a shout out to the high school girls' varsity basketball team. I know they concluded their season this weekend, but had a huge sectional championship. I know we got a proud Papa over here, but, but so proud of the, all of the team members there and Coach Smith and all the hard work that they put in and, and the way that they represented our town. So way to go to the, to the high school girls' basketball team and we're very, very proud of you.
Great.
He's doubly proud.
Yeah, thank you for that. Counselor Noblet.
I have nothing at this point.
All right.
Thank you.
Counselor Sturgeon.
My apologies for missing the state of the town last week. It was not a fun week for me. I'll just leave it at that, but I did watch some of the video. Well done to everybody. Grant, thank you for stepping up last minute to
Absolutely.
take my spot. I very much appreciate it. Again, congratulations to the girls' sectional championships. Not regional, didn't go the way we want to do, but it's a good season for them. And then that's it. That's all I have.
All right. I just wanted to say thanks to Grant, to Cheryl for state of the town. I thought that was, that was great, so thank you for all your work for that. All of our department heads, town employees, you know, last year was just a great year and looking forward to 2024. So with that, I'll call our third meeting of 2024 adjourned at 8:14 PM. Thank you.
Great, thank you.